Recording in progress. The meeting is now being recorded. The live stream will start when the chairman calls the meeting to order.
Thank you. If everybody would take their seats, we'll get this started. I would ask that those members here in chambers would silence their electronic devices. And so being 10 o'clock, we have four members of the board that are in attendance. So at this time, I will call the March 17, 2022 Douglas County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order and ask Commissioner Tarkanian to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
I did it.
Thank you. So the record should show that we have four commissioners in attendance. Is there any chance that Mr. Noah Sad is online or he is not? Okay. So I have no indications that he was not planning on joining us today. So but he may step in later or he may be having car problems or something. I'd also like to note that Mr. Coverley had indicated earlier that he wasn't going to be able to be in attendance today as well. So we're missing that as well. So anyways, public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light, which indicates you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the red light, once the light turns red, please finish your comments and resume your seat. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified as for possible action and then closing public comment. So at this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. Do we have any public comment?
Good morning. My name is Gail Tig. My family and I own the Van Sickle Station Ranch. I'm the manager part managing partner as well as the matriarch. We've owned this property for some 26 years now and value its place in this community and its history. We're also very proud to be able to preserve it. We've been diligently pursuing a conservation easement on over 400 of our 600-plus acres. This has been in the works for five years. There have been many times when we were ready to throw in the towel. This acreage, if marketed for development, could feasibly create at least 22 home sites. If we added in some of our additional acreage on the west side of Foothill, that number could be significantly more. But we've stayed the course in spite of the temptation to offer it for sale in today's unprecedented prices. But we believe in the value of open space, green space, the value of agriculture and the many benefits it provides our entire valley, and we've stayed the course. All we need now, after years of working with several federal agencies, including the BLM and the Department of Interior, along with miles of red tape, are two rather simple documents to be approved by you. One is a trail easement along Mueller Lane, someday connecting others and completing a trail similar to the Vista Trail from Wally's to Genoa. There's no downside to this opportunity for Douglas County. Secondly, we are pleased that Douglas County has sought to monitor this easement after joint work with the Department of Parks and Recreation of Douglas County. Both of these documents have basically been created by Douglas County. You will have these in your hands before your next meeting, which is April 7. And once you have perused these, please help us conclude this significant step towards protecting our open spaces here in the valley that we all love by approving and signing these documents. We're very close to the finish line now, and you can nail it with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts there.
Good morning, Ellie Waller. Now that the three major fires that severely affected our area with loss of homes, smoke, et cetera, have passed but are not forgotten, it's time to seriously consider adding wildland urban interface definitions to our next ordinance update for development standards. The wooi is often defined from a spatial or geographical perspective. The classic interface is where urban sprawl presses up against public and private natural areas, bringing to mind a distinct line between urban and rural. By contrast, the intermix is an area undergoing a transition from agriculture and forest uses to urban land uses. As the name implies, the type of interface involves a mixing of rural and herbal land uses. Wooi is an area within or adjacent to at-risk community that is identified in recommendations to the Secretary of Agriculture in Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or a wooi, which is or is not in effect, but is within a half-mile boundary of an at-risk community. A wooi is also any area that is within a mile and a half of a risk community and has sustained steep slopes that may affect wildfire behavior. Let's see. What is a risk community? A risk community is defined as a community within the wildland-urban interface listed in federal register notices, as a community within a vicinity of federal lands that are high risk for wildfire, or a group of homes and other structures with basic infrastructure and services within or adjacent to federal land, as defined. These areas' conditions are conducive to large-scale wildland fire disturbance events posing a significant threat to human life and property. Hope we consider that soon. My next topic today. At the March 8 Planning Commission, I reported a possible violation of a size of an advertised accessory dwelling unit at Clear Creek Tahoe. Not sure if this 1,800-square-foot guest house has been permitted, and if it was, I don't know how, because it violates code. It must be reduced to 1,000 square feet or less, per the code. A proposed revision to the Clear Creek specific plan went to the Planning Commission, which will come to you, I think, on the 7th, which includes the accessory dwelling unit update that has been previously approved for their specific plan. Their development standards need to clearly state that 1,000 square feet is all that is allowed. Their language, which was approved, is accessory dwelling units have been modified and approved per PD blah 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 November 21, 2016, in accordance with Section 1.4.2. Section 1.4.2 says that their homeowners association or design review, not Douglas County, are responsible for the administration, but the Director of Community Development has authority to interpret this. Not sure why the accessory dwelling unit size didn't come to the Planning Commission. I do not believe this was brought before them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller.
Ted Gaines, I have some documents I'm going to hand you here in a second. I took it on my own, as we've been talking about inspectors and whatnot, and I should, somebody told me I should give you my qualifications, because we did a bunch of that last week. I've been a licensed contractor for almost-
Mr. Gaines, would you, you didn't state your name. Did you sign in? I didn't recall you.
Did he say his name?
Okay. My apologies. You may start over, okay? I interrupted your time. I apologize. Thank you.
I've been a licensed contractor for almost 50 years. I have built commercial libraries in Sunnyvale and Santa Clara. When I was 24 years old, I was a foreman. I was a lead man on Kaiser Hospital, four units, four stories high. I've personally, under my license, made the cover of Better Builder Magazine. I have, I was involved in building the first Victorian houses in, since the '30s in California, before I came here. And I've turned in inspectors in the San Jose area for taking money, bribes. I could give a lot more, but that's my qualifications, as you got some last week. Now, I took it on myself to pull up every county in Nevada, and I called them. They're, I'll hand you the papers, their names, the head people are here. Everybody from us up, 50,000 people, are all certified. Nye County says they will not allow an uncertified residential inspector on a commercial job. They don't belong there. Elko County is completely certified, so he does all his commercial and electrical. Every one of them are certified for the safety of the people. I didn't get into uncertified people until I got to Humboldt County, I think it was, Churchill County. They got certified commercial people, but they kind of work around what they do at the head person's discretion. Humboldt County has no certification at all, but there are 16,000 people. So from 50,000 up, everybody's certified. Now, I found that Carson City uses Charles Abbott, which is another private company, as I'm working with in Lyon County, which is far west. Now, two meetings ago, our county manager asked for $20,000 for a new secretary. Took him five minutes to get it. Now, we got two choices here. We can either get certified inspectors in here and pay them, or we can go to one of these private companies. Now, I told one of our ex-commissioners that's in the room here, oh, a year ago, that how corrupt this county was. It's a bunch of good old boys running this. And if you're friends of them, and I can walk through it and tell you, I don't want to bore you with it, you'll get them all, but I'll give you these papers. It just goes to show you, when our inspector says, we're just doing what other counties are saying, I want another tool for the toolbox, it's not true. We need to keep our electrical stuff in. In fact, if you call these people, they laughed at me when I told them we were trying to change our electrical codes. And I would appreciate, if you want to look at it, if not, use it for firestarter, and that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Could you add that into the record, please? Thank you.
Jim Slade. In the last 20 years that I've been regularly coming to board meetings, the issue that has bothered me the most has been the constant support of community development for nearly every project that comes along. That is out of touch with the current board. At last week's Planning Commission meeting, the first item was a request for a special use permit for an applicant to create a so-called bed and breakfast at his home on Sierra Shadows. That applicant had recently been cited and fined for running an illegal vacation home rental on the same property, but he apparently thought he had found a loophole in the code that would allow him to call it a B&amp;B. Staff recited the recent examples of applications for B&amp;Bs in the Carson Valley. Of the four that were approved, three were on A-19 or FR-19 parcels. The fourth was on a parcel zone SFR-2. Staff stated that that parcel, quote, "is in a similar area to the applicant's request," yet that was not at all accurate. The adjacent properties to the other parcel were 160 acres to the south, A-19 to the north and west, and 10-plus acres to the east. The applicant's property, on the other hand, was surrounded on all four sides by residential properties of two acres or less, many of whose owners publicly opposed this special use permit. The applicant admitted that he would not be supplying any food whatsoever, belying the idea that it was a bed and breakfast. He had an attached accessory dwelling plus a so-called bonus room, which in fact contained two bedrooms, a bathroom with a shower, and some sort of kitchen. Did staff ask what was included in the kitchen to determine if it was legal or not? Or, of course not. Instead, staff recommended approval of what was essentially two illegal vacation home rentals. The vote was unanimous: for denial. The second item was about changes to the Clear Creek development, to change the zoning of a seven-acre parcel from public recreation to SFR-8,000 to build 22 golf cottages, and to amend the design standards to allow a maximum 50-foot height rather than 35 allowed there and in Douglas County as a whole. No one really objected to the zoning change, but in public comment, a number of people, including a nearby resident of Clear Creek, objected to the 50-foot height maximum for golf cottages that were supposed to be no more than 2,850 feet, square feet, stating that they did not meet the required finding that the change be deemed to be in the public interest. Staff replied, "We haven't heard any concerns expressed by any residents of Clear Creek," which was untrue, and then made the incomprehensible statement that the applicant and the owner of Clear Creek is the public too, contrary to the letter and intent to the required finding. He followed that with the mind-boggling claim that since he couldn't find any detriment to the public interest, then what's in the public interest is what the property owner and the applicant want. That is wrong in so many ways. Needless to say, staff recommended approval, but again, the Planning Commission didn't agree and voted to deny the increased height maximum. The question is, why does staff seemingly recommend approval of nearly everything that comes before them? Is it direction from the director or the county manager? This board should make it clear to the county manager and staff that they expect a more diligent and balanced approach to all applications that come before them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Additional public comment?
Frank Gerdige for the record. I don't know if it's appropriate for me at this time to be talking about it, but I know that I'm here for the appointment to the Carson Waters Subconservancy, which is part of your consent calendar. And I didn't know if you were going to be talking to us or asking us questions, but I would like to be perfectly frank with you right now and say that of the three candidates that applied for this position, there's one candidate that truly wanted to be on this board, and two of us applied because nobody else had stepped up and done so, and that would be myself and Barbara Byington.
Mr. Gerdige, we will be addressing that as the first item on the administrative agenda, not on the consent calendar. So you'll have an opportunity-
Okay, so I will wait until then to go ahead and make my comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Happy St. Patty's Day. My name is Jen Naldor. I'm with Main Street Gardnerville, and I just wanted to thank you for your consideration of our festival permit, not only our festival permit, but the other festival permits that are on the consent calendar today. I think I speak for many when I say that we are so excited to bring our events back to the community, and with your support, we're able to do so. So thank you, and I'm, thank you. Hopefully it gets passed.
Thank you, Ms. Naldor. I think we're excited, and our community is excited as well. So is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Seeing none, I will ask Ms. Johnson if there's any online public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no opening public comment online.
Okay, thank you. I was indicated by our county manager that he had public comments, so I'll roll out it this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was asked to provide some public comment today related to Barton Health. I think, as the community is aware, they purchased the Lakeside Inn. Chris Proctor, their Director of Community Benefit, asked if I would let the board and the public know that they are going to start demolition on the Lakeside Inn buildings on April 4, and they have requested to come before this board at our April 7 meeting to give you guys an update of where they're at with that project.
Thank you. We look forward to the, to something being done up there, I'm sure. So anyway, okay, seeing no further public comment then, we will, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the agenda as presented. Seeing no discussion, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Approval of the previous minutes for possible action to discussion to approve the draft minutes of February 3, 2022, and February 17, 2022, regular meeting of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad to approve the minutes as presented of February 3 and February 17. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. At this time then, we would adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. The record needs to show that Mr. Noah Sad has joined us and that, and we are minus Sheriff Coverley in that vote, so we have five votes available on this particular board. And I believe this is, so I'll read this into the record for possible action. Discussion to approve the onsite unrestricted liquor license and entertainment endorsement for Ham Dogs Incorporated DBA Mad Dogs, conditioned on the correction of all items identified in the inspection of the premises by the East Fork Fire Protection District. Ham Dogs Incorporated is represented by owners Greg, I know that I'm going to butcher this one, Sayabalian.
Sayabalian? How do they do? I spent eight years in Hawaii, so I, you know, I mastered that kind of, all the bowels that are in that, but Sayabalian, okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a hard time pronouncing Armenian's-
I knew you were going to say something there. Should I have had you say that one? Okay. It's Tarkanian, right? Okay. And Lawrence Samuels, and both have signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Mad Dogs is located at 16, or 1267 Highway 395, Unit K, Gardnerville, Nevada, 89410. And this is being brought forward by Captain Mitchatarian. Captain?
Good morning. Captain Ron Mitchatarian for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. This applicant has completed all the paperwork. They have completed their fire inspection and everything, all the repairs that were listed on that. They've paid their, their fees, and we are not in objection to this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Captain Mitchatarian? I have a question of the applicant. Mr. Samuels, are we going to finally start serving eggs past 10 o'clock in the morning? Oh, 11:00, okay. Okay, so anyways. Anyways, a lot of confusion in our community. We've known it for so many years as, as ham dogs, so to change it to mad dogs, but under, you know, I, looking at Larry, I understand why it's mad dogs. I'm just teasing you, Larry, so, as you know that. Okay, anyways, any other questions or observations? Thank you. Then at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve this unrestricted liquor license.
I'll make the motion to approve the unrestricted liquor license for ham dogs doing business as mad dogs.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad to approve the unrestricted liquor license for ham dogs DBA Mad Dogs. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
There you go. I won't, I won't butcher it again, so. So at this time then, we'll adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Consent calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are items that can be adopted with one motion unless an item is pulled by a commissioner or a member of the public. Members of the public who wish to have a consent item placed on the administrative agenda shall make that request during the public comment section of the beginning of the meeting and specifically state why they are making the request. When items are pulled for discussion, they will automatically be placed on the administrative agenda to be heard at the discretion of the chairperson and may be continued until, or may be continued until another meeting. The public did not remove any items to the admin calendar, did the commissioners wish to do that? Seeing none-
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent calendar A through O as presented.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the consent calendar, items A through O as presented. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Consent calendar is approved. Consent calendar is approved. We will now move into the administrative agenda. The chairperson will read the agenda item into the public record and have the discretion to determine how the item will be presented. Agenda items may be considered ahead or after a scheduled item on the agenda. Public comment we take in on items that are identified as for possible action. For possible action, discussion to approve the appointment of a member to the Carson Water Subconservancy District to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of a current member. The appointee will serve the remaining unexpired term of March 17th, 2022 through December 31st, 2022. Mr. Cates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The vacancy in the Carson Water Subconservancy District is a result of the resignation of Jack Jacob, who moved from the area, so that is his remaining term that the applicants would be filling. We advertised for the position and received three applications, Barbara Byington, Frank Godecki, and Cassandra Uheart, and I believe they're all with us today. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we probably should have each of those individuals come forward and chat with us and see if we have any commissioner comments or questions. So, who would like to go first? Mr. Godecki, you were, you were ahead, so we'll let you continue your comments.
I'm already, I'm already signed in.
And we're going to try to limit it to about three minutes, if you don't mind, but.
Yeah, well, as I indicated earlier, having this position opened up back in December for appointment earlier this year, nobody from the Ag community had stepped forward to apply for the position, I believe, and so I'm sorry that the Ag community didn't respond to that. I know that a few years ago, a county commissioner stepped down from the board of the Subconservancy District to add one new, one more member from the Ag community to that board. It used to be that there were three commissioners on the board and two from the Ag community. And so I do appreciate the fact that you've allowed us to have a third member on that board, and, but as I indicated earlier, of the three of us that applied this time, the reason that I applied was because nobody else was stepping forward, or that I assumed that nobody else was stepping forward. I guess we don't communicate too well with each other, so, anyway, that was the reason why I applied, and as I indicated, of the three of us that applied, there's one of us that truly, truly wants to be on the board. And, you know, the board, of the agricultural people on the board, there's two agricultural people currently on that board. One of them could be considered an institution. He's been on that board for almost 50 years. And the other person that's on that board is from my generation. He's a little bit younger than I am, and today, we have an opportunity to possibly include the future generation of farming from Carson Valley. We have a young lady who is the same age approximately as my daughter, and I am very enlightened by the fact that we have some people who, from that generation, want to continue in agriculture in this valley, and I think it would be great if you guys on the board would consider her before you considered myself. But, having applied, if you have any questions of me, I will be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. I wasn't really quite sure where you were going with that, but anyways, okay. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your involvement previously. We do have two commissioners that serve on that board, myself and Commissioner Ingles, and then we have a member-at-large also of the community, so that's Mr. Dave Nelson. So, we have two Mag members that serve on that board, so.
Yeah.
You know, so, okay.
All righty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Godecki.
I think, thank you.
Okay. The other applicants?
Do I have to write my name down? Okay, this is my first time, you guys. My name's Cassandra Uheart. I am the one applicant that applied who does want to be on this board. I'm 27. I have lived here my whole entire life. I'm a fifth-generation rancher up at Van Sickle Station Ranch, actually Gale Tide was just here, and worked with my dad the whole entire time. I did go to college at Colorado State in Fort Collins. I got my agricultural degree in animal science and moved back. I now work at Snyder's Pine Nut Livestock Supply, so I am still involved in the agricultural community. Again, I work with my dad all the time. I would like to be the new generation that would, you know, there needs, there is going to be a change in this valley, everybody can see it. So I would like to be there as, still having an agricultural background, but also having that college education to kind of maybe meet in the middle, because we do need some changes because so many people are moving to this lovely valley. I would like to keep it for my future children and for the future generations coming into this valley to keep it beautiful, but also know that growth is apparent, and hopefully everybody mushes together very nicely. Any questions for?
Do we have any questions to the board?
Yes.
Ms. Ingles?
Hopefully on Saturday. That would be really great, but that's a huge concern, and, you know, water is gold in this valley, so I think things definitely need to happen.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Noasad? Oh, you were reading. Anyways, thank you for coming forward. I believe you also came forward and applied for our conveyance, the water conveyance committee, so, okay. Thank you for coming forward on this one. And Ms. Byington, right? Byington?
Barbara Byington, rancher for 70 years in the Carson Valley. I also agree with Frank. It's time we let the new, younger generation help the ranchers out here. It's getting where there's fewer and fewer of us, so my vote goes for Cassie. And I've known Cassie, she was a baby, so I know she'll do a good job.
Wow, I don't know how to, you know, I, so we have three applicants, but it seems like our choices have been narrowed significantly, so I don't know. I'll see what the rest of the commissioners say about that. So, anyways, those are the three applicants, commissioners. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment. I've known Ms. Byington for about 30 years. We have not been close personal friends, but we have known each other for a very long time. I was delighted to see her name on this, and now I'm delighted to see her endorsement of Ms. U, I'm not even going to try it, anyway. Thank you for being here, Barbara. Thank you for applying, and the same to the other applicants.
Seeing no other questions, do we entertain a motion to, for appointment? Oh, okay. Additional public comment? I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Mr. Slade?
Jim Slade. I think that everyone who lives in Douglas County appreciates the past generation, the current generation, and the future generation that want to continue ranching here in Douglas County. It is the heart blood of the county. We especially appreciate those who do not seek to develop some or all of their property. So we want to see ranching continue here, and I certainly support Ms. Uheart and all those who want to continue ranching here. I do just have to make one, an important point. You know, when Mr. Godecki came up earlier and said his name for the record, it was suggested that he hadn't and had to start all over again. This time, when he came up, he did not state his name for the record, as he should to identify himself for the record, so that it's very clear on, so, you know, and he wasn't called out for not, so we need to make sure that everyone states their name for the record every time they come up, so that the record is clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Duly noted.
Ellie Waller also support the new person, Uheart, for coming forward. It's hard when you're younger to start in this. I did 20 years ago up in Lake Tahoe. I'm new here in the valley, looking forward to people following the Van Sickle example of not taking up cluster development in areas where it doesn't belong or doesn't need to be. Understand that the ranchers have the ability to subset their equity in their property, but some places, this does not belong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Any other public comment here in chambers? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. Then we'll bring it back to the board. Gentlemen, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, I'll make, be happy to make the motion. I move that Ms. Uheart be given the position, appointed to the position as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the appointment of Cassandra Uheart to the Carson Waters Subconservancy District for the unexpired term of May 7, or March 17th, 2022 through December 31st, 2022. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Ms. Jones, or Ms. Uheart, I just want to remind you that you'll have an opportunity once again in December to apply for a full four-year term, so I just wanted to remind you that we're anxious to have you on the board and hope you find yourself enjoying that position and reapply for that four-year position, because we need folks like you on this. So, thank you. There you go, Mr. James. That fulfills the board, right? Okay, thank you. So, okay, very good. Item number two for possible action, discussion to approve, one, approve a $330,129 contract to Group West Construction for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Records Division remodel project, and two, authorize a budget increase of $155,129,000 for the project, and number three, authorize a budget transfer from Douglas County Sheriff's Office salary savings to offset the project budget increase, and four, authorize the county manager to sign all contract documents. This is being presented by UnderSheriff Elges.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. UnderSheriff Ron Elges for the record. Part that we want to talk about is, as the discussion starts with the new J-lick building that's possibly, or our J-lick building to become the sheriff's office. To let you know, first off, this is part of the new remodel that we'll be doing, hopefully down the line sometime as things move along. This is, be incorporated, all of our records division. It's just, right now, it's also very tight-quartered. They put a lot of walls up that caused, for different reasons, and now we're trying to open it up more so that they have more space for, there's not so close quarter, basically. Do you have any specific questions regarding what we're asking for?
Mr. Commissioners? No questions? Okay. This is for possible action, so at this time then, I have no questions, so at this time we'll go to public comment. Are there any public comments regarding this item in chambers? Okay, seeing no comments here, Ms. Johnson, do we have any comments online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Wow, this is going really, really quick. Okay, since we know, we'll bring it back to the board then. No other questions or comments, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion, sir.
Please do.
I move that we approve the $330,129 contract with Group West Construction for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Records Division remodel project, that we authorize the budget increase of $155,129 for the project, that we authorize a budget transfer from the Douglas County Sheriff's salary savings to offset the project budget increase, and that we authorize the county manager to sign all contract documents.
Do you have a second? Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the contract with Group West Construction for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Records Division. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. There you go.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a nice day.
Okay, we'll move to item number three for presentation only. Introduction of Ordinance 2022-1599, and ordinance amending provisions of Chapter 20.622 of the Douglas County Code, including a setting of occupancy limits, allowing vacation home rental VHR permits to be issued to closely-held corporate entities grandfathering in existing multiple VHR permit holders through October 1st, 2024, subject to the conditions and terms of renewal, clarifying the liability insurance that must be held by VHR permit holders, increasing the length of the term of the VHR advisory board members from two years to four years, imposing liability for persons who assist in leasing of VHRs without a valid VHR permit, modifying the fine structure, increasing the time in which a notice of appeal must be filed from 14 days, 10 days to 14 days of the date of the first notice of violation was mailed, increasing occupancy from two per bedroom to two per bedroom plus two for properties with four or fewer bedrooms, limiting occupancy to four persons per onsite parking space if occupancy exceeds two per bedroom, and other related amendments clarifying the intent of the regulations. This is the first reading, and will be presented by Deputy DA Doug Ritchie.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. As indicated, this is for introduction. There's further amendments to the VHR regulations. We've received feedback, both from members of the public, the VHR Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, as well as the plaintiffs in a lawsuit. As the board may recall, the last board meeting, there was a settlement agreement that was approved. Pursuant to the terms of that settlement agreement, the county agreed to make some changes to the VHR regulations. It is hoped that these changes will provide a framework from which the county can move forward, and the VHR Advisory Board can collect data and come back with recommendations to this board for future adoption. The red line of the ordinance is attached. Members of the public can see what changes were made, but I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners, questions of Mr. Ritchie? Seeing no questions from the board, and this is a presentation item, so we will not be taking public comment, so we'll move on to item number four then, because there's no action required. So, this is also for presentation only, so there will be no public comment on this. Introduction of Ordinance 2022-1597, and ordinance amending Douglas County Code Title 13 Parks, Chapter 13.04, Parks and Recreation Facilities Use and Regulation, to clarify the authority of unincorporated towns within Douglas County to administer and manage town parks and recreation facilities within the boundaries of the respective towns. Clarify the emergency authority of the Parks and Recations Director or applicable town manager over park operations in times of emergency. Make various clarifications regarding dogs in park facilities, and provide for all other properly-related matters. This is the first reading, and it looks like Ms. Adie is going to present instead of Mr. Morgan today, so.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the board. What you just read covers most of the changes. What you just read covers most of the changes that are in the ordinance. The ordinance is attached, and it is redlined to show the changes. The majority of the changes are some language cleanup. There have been changes to reference our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board from the previous language where they were referred to as a commission. The new ordinance also gives the town managers authority over parks where they did not have authority before, and also gives the director and the town manager the authority to address immediate health and safety needs so they may approve temporary rules and regulations until, as appropriate, until the emergency event has ended, or approval can be obtained by the board or applicable town board. There has also been changes to the language regarding dogs in parks since there have been changes to our park systems where we now have a dog park. I am here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? I'm not even sure these guys are awake right now.
Well, we're awake, Chris.
Okay, sensing no questions. I have no questions. So with that, thank you very much, and we look forward to the action item to come before us in the next meeting, I suppose. So, okay, thank you so much. Now, the next item is under your jurisdiction also, so you don't need to get up and move and come back. For possible action, item number five for possible action discussion to approve increasing the weekly hours of four recreation leader senior positions to 29 hours per week for each position, and eliminating four recreation aid positions in the Parks and Recreations Department. Sadie.
Hi, thank you again. I realize I did not introduce myself during the last agenda item. My name is Brooke Ady. I'm the Assistant Director for Community Services. I am sitting in for Scott Morgan today. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this item. I would also like to thank the county manager's office and human resources for working with us and their creativity to address staffing needs. Although this proposal does not solve compensation, it will give us, it will increase our ability to recruit. Additionally, you may see more requests like this coming forward. The current request is to eliminate five vacant recreation aid positions to adjust for four recreation leader senior positions to 29 hours per week. These positions are for our kids' club and adventure camp programs. The request is FTE-neutral. We're not asking for additional positions, but to increase the hours of the positions that we have to make them more appealing and able to recruit. During the pandemic in fiscal year 19 and 20, the Community Services Department furloughed 22 employees and froze 11 vacant positions. This, this move is to eliminate lower-paid positions to help us with our recruiting efforts. Since the pandemic, the department has not fully recovered from the vacant positions. Only five or six of the previously furloughed employees did return. At this time, we are really struggling with recruiting staff as we have been, it's been impossible for us to compete with the private sector. Entities such as Target, In-N-Out Burger, McDonald's, Burger King have been able to offer entry-level positions at much higher wages than we've been able to offer. As such, this has crippled our after-school program. We find it incredibly hard to recruit for skilled and entry-level positions. Once again, currently, our recreation aid starts at $9.30, and our move to increase the hours for our rec. leader senior positions will allow us to fill our after-school programs. As an additional note, when we started this process a couple months ago, there were 83 vacancies in the county. Forty-five of those were under the umbrella of community services. Additionally, the kids' club program prior to the pandemic was operating at six schools. We've been reduced to three schools. Our enrollment is very limited as we're having to bus, we have recreation staff driving kids from one location to another. This program is not just about kids having fun after school, but it's providing a safe and secure environment for them to be watched while their parents can enter into the workforce. This is really about value to jobs to adults during the summer and before and after school. I am here if you guys have any additional questions to this request.
Thank you, Ms. Ady. I'll bring it to the board. Any questions of Ms. Ady? Mr. Ingalls?
Nine dollars an hour? That's barely enough to pay worker comp. Is there anything we could do to take that higher? Have you talked to Wendy or Patrick or anybody? I mean, what are our limits? It shouldn't impact the budget very much. Mr. Cates, do you have anything?
So Mr. Ingalls is asking whether or not these positions can go to a higher, a higher pay grade. I think we're going to be looking at different items in the budget in relationship to that, Mr. Cates.
Yeah, for the record, Patrick Cates, we are putting together some proposals for the board to consider during our budget hearings to address compensation. Thank you.
But we appreciate your observations, Mr. Ingalls. Mr. Tarkanian, any questions or observations?
No, I just concur with Commissioner Ingalls.
Okay. I had a feeling you did, so, okay. Then this is an action item, so we'll take it to the, take it to chambers. Is any public comment here available in chambers on this item? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, is there any online comments in regards to this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have one person with their hand raised. Beth, do you have public comment on item number five?
Yes, I do. My name is Beth Hinowski for the record. I am a volunteer at the Senior Center. I know we are struggling to get volunteers, but we may have an opportunity to utilize volunteers to free up more time for staff to do the jobs and the tasks that volunteers are not allowed to do. You might also want to use a method of trying to use the volunteers for more tasks, again, freeing up the time of staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. There's no further public comment online at this time.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for further comments or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we approve increasing the weekly hours of four recreational leader senior positions to 29 hours a week for each position, and eliminating the four recreation aid positions in the Park and Recreation Department as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls to approve the increasing of weekly hours for four recreational leader senior, leader senior positions to 29 hours per week for each position, eliminating four recreation aid. Any other discussion? Sensing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. There you go. Okay, well, no indications we need to take a break, right? Okay, we'll move to item number six. For possible action discussion on the adoption of Ordinance 2022-1598, an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nevada, designated by the short title 2022 Community Center Refunding Bond Ordinance, providing the, for the issuance of Douglas County, Nevada, general obligation, limited tax, community center refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2022, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $7 million, providing for the form, terms, and conditions thereof, and covenants related, relating to the payment of said bonds, and providing the effective date thereof. This is the second reading. Ms. Willoughby and Mr. Zach Watley, presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri Willoughby, for the record. As noted, this is not a new financing. We are refunding existing debt that is on the books. I know there was some public comment about the original issuance, but that's not the issue before you today. We're here to save the taxpayers' money by issuing, refunding the debt at a lower interest rate, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. We have received some bids, so I can give you a ballpark figure of the interest rates we've received. That's, we've received, they range anywhere from 1.98% to 2.1%. So we won't know until we, on some of these, until we select and then lock in the rates. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Since Mr. Ingalls has some questions.
The interest rates are going up.
I got two questions, Ms. Willoughby and Zach. This note would be refunded for what would be the new term, if there is one. And secondly, who, who's going to carry this note?
Terri Willoughby, for the record. It'll be an obligation of the county, as it currently is. We are not changing the term of the, of the existing debt, so it will be in place for another 10 years, just like the original debt, not extending the term at all.
Can I get one of these notes?
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls. Any further comment by the, or questions by the board? Mr. Rice?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make clear that we are not indebted the county to anything. What we're doing is reducing the amount of money we're going to have to pay for the service of the bonds.
Terri Willoughby, for the record. That's correct. We are creating taxpayer savings by reducing the interest rate and refunding the debt.
Thank you. Ms. Willoughby, do we have an anticipated dollar amount that's, that we're looking at, savings?
We're estimating at this date, and, you know, until we close, we're not going to know, but most of the rates will be locked in, probably mostly after today's meeting, about $289,000.
Thank you. Being an action item, I'll take this then to chambers for public comment. Sensing no public comment, Ms. Johnson, do we have any online public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board then for further discussion and a possible motion. Any, any other discussion? No. Sensing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2022-1598 as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Rice for the adoption of Ordinance Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. So we'll move to item number seven for presentation only. Reports and updates from county commission members concerning the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to, or meeting functions they have attended. I'll start down at the end. Mr. Tarkanian?
I do not have any comments.
You? Mr. Noah said.
No comments.
Mr. Rice?
I'll take up the slack. Okay, I have a couple of things that I wanted to bring forward to you. The event center is on budget and on time. We are having the last beam ceremony on April the 18th. The micro-transit, starting at the lake, will commence on June the 24th. The Kale Vision Plan, Megan Kelly has been able to get some grant money, and that looks like that is going to be a reality, that is going to happen. And thank you, Megan Kelly, for all of the work you've put into that. As was mentioned earlier, the Lakeside Inn was, was sold after having to close due to lack of employees during, in, in other problems during the pandemic, and Barton Hospital has purchased that. The even better news is that last week, Newsweek named Barton Hospital one of the top 10 hospitals in the United States, and has been designated as a rural trauma center. Also, just to make you aware, Fire Chief Scott Lindgren of the Tahoe-Douglas Fire Department is attempting to get support for his operation, Save the Basin. His dream is to have firefighting helicopters in the basin owned by the fire departments within the basin. They would not have to get permission from anybody to put out a fire that starts anywhere in the neighborhood. And it is so much better to have the helicopters stationed at the lake because it's much easier not having to fill it full of water and try to climb up the mountain. So it's much better to have it here, and it can respond to fires outside of the basin, anywhere in the county. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. That's in the, that's in the works. He's trying to get public support for that, and I think that's something that is desperately needed here. And that's my report.
Thank you. It looks like Mr. Noah said had some comments.
Question for, on Commissioner Rice. The helicopter, what kind of helicopter is it that, is it?
Oh, I'm not into helicopters. It's a big one.
Okay, would you call that the crane?
No, not a crane.
Okay. Thank you.
Perhaps I can help with that. A good friend of mine was the chief pilot for LA County Fire, and he flew Blackhawks. LA County uses the Blackhawk because they have these Santa Ana winds. They whip up all the time. There's one problem. A Blackhawk costs $15 million. That's before you get into pilots and maintenance and everything. And I believe this June, there's going to be a convention of firefighting equipment at one of the event centers in Reno. They have it annually. So Wes, you could go up there and see what's for sale. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have additional comments, Mr. Noah said?
Yes. According to Clock on the Wall, we just finished the meeting in three minutes.
It all depends on which clock you're looking at, because this one over here shows three minutes after 11:00. That one shows three minutes after 10:00. So, in your, I appreciate the observation, though. I, I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Cates?
I just wanted to point out that we're hedging our bets until Congress decides what time it is.
But once they do decide for daylight savings time, we'll not have to change clocks anymore.
Yes, I, I had actually the opportunity to visit with the business council yesterday morning, and I also noted that we were starting at 6:00 AM, and everybody glanced up at their clocks also to, what's he talking about? Because it was at 7:00, actually, so anyways. I have no other comments, so at this time then, we will go to closing public comment. At this time, public comment, we've taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, or those items where public comment was, has already been taken. So is there public comment in chambers?
Good morning. I'm Terri Schultz, and I'm with the Friends of Genoa. And in the consent agenda, you approved a festival permit for Genoa Western Heritage Days, April 29th and 30th, and I thank you for that approval, and I encourage you to join us that weekend in Genoa. We have a lot of things scheduled, music, Chautauqua, our favorite, McAvoy Lane will be there doing Mark Twain, vendors, a horse parade, a Civil War reenactment, and much more. There's a concert in the Town Hall Friday night and Saturday night, and... There's a concert in the Town Hall Friday night and Saturday night, and those tickets, everything else is free except for those two concerts, and they're $45 a ticket. And if you would like to purchase tickets, you can go to Eventbrite online, or you can drop a check off at the Town Office sometime between now and then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My wife and I are looking forward to attending. We did buy tickets.
Good morning. Nice to say that. Ellie Waller. Carson Conservation, build out in Carson City. This was listed as voices in the March 15th edition by Ronnie Hanneman. While there are many positive assets to track one to Carson City, one of the most compelling reasons is that this consolidated municipality is only about 144 square acres plus or minus, which will be growth self-limiting. To put that in perspective, Washoe County is 6,542 square miles, with the city of Reno at almost 112 square miles. Douglas County comprises 738 square miles, and Lyon County is 2,024 square miles. Thus, those counties have plenty of land growth depending on infrastructure. I disagree. With the building of the 580 dumping at our border, our infrastructure has now been compromised. I think this was a thoughtless statement. I'm glad to see these statistics that come forward, but we also have to look at what it's done to our infrastructure. We don't have the bypass, which probably won't happen until 2030, 2040, if at all. Also, as always, there's water issues. So, making statements like this just raise the hair on the back of my neck. Next, no disrespect to Barton, the Lakeside Inn could have been utilized as affordable housing for the biggest employers up there, Barton being one of them, the ski resorts. You know, the lack of affordable and now what we call achievable housing is an issue. It was, that that couldn't have been renovated and retrofitted for affordable housing. Again, I'm glad Barton is going forward. I'm glad to hear that they're a world-class hospital as reported. Just as a clerical thing, acronyms should be spoken out. I know what an FTE is. A lot of people that are new to the audience probably don't know what most of our acronyms are. I came from aerospace alphabet soup, so it's hard. I want to also say thank you for everybody that worked on the VHR policy changes through the settlement. I attend all the advisory meetings. It's a tough job. These people that are on that advisory board need to be applauded often, and I'm looking forward to further refinements. And happy St. Patty's Day. Enjoy a wonderful dessert tonight. Take a Guinness and your favorite Irish whiskey and put it over vanilla.
Thank you. I may take you up on that offer.
Jim Slade, to follow up on my earlier comments, there can be gray areas in required findings, and reasonable people can disagree. In some cases, however, it is clear that any common sense, reasonable reading of the required findings cannot be met. In the recent Planning Commission items I mentioned earlier, when Ryan Case, who had been found to have violated the rental laws, tried to find a loophole for the B&amp;B, for staff to say that the request was in a similar area to a previously-approved request, yet that that was not true. That other parcel was surrounded by large parcels of 10, 20, 160 acres. Did she not look at the surrounding properties of both requests to see how different they were? Did she decide that there was no reason to explain those significant differences? Or did she just not look at those surrounding parcels? None of those answers is adequate. They're all unacceptable. The bonus room that he claimed that he had was two bedrooms, a bathroom, and some kind of kitchen that was not described. Staff didn't seem to know whether that kitchen made this an illegal second accessory dwelling, nor even mentioned that concern. That, too, is unacceptable. On the Clear Creek project, the change in design standards to allow a 50-foot maximum required that the finding, that the amendment be deemed to be in the public interest. There was no public interest identified, and several people, including a Clear Creek resident, spoke against the 50-foot maximum. No one except the applicant spoke in favor. Staff's novel, but misdirected and misapplied reasons to recommend approval defy imagination. He said, quote, "The applicant and owner of Clear Creek is the public, too." No, that is not the letter or intent of the required finding. He is the applicant. And then he went on to say that since he couldn't find any detriment to the public interest, then what's in the public interest is what the property owner and the applicant want. That, too, is a false way to interpret that. It is nonsensical and offensive. The required finding is to identify positive public interest. Why would golf cottages less than 3,000 square feet require a height of more than 35 feet? Those are just two of the most recent examples of staff making recommendations for approvals that make no sense, that defy common sense logic. There is no common sense interpretation for making those findings in the affirmative, and that sort of behavior needs to stop. Both of those were overruled by the Planning Commission, but it makes community development look like fools and shills for developers.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Are there any additional public comments here in chambers? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson for the record. Beth did have her hand up earlier, so I want to check with her to see if she has closing public comment. Beth, do you have closing public comment?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. No closing public comment at this time.
Thank you. So, with no additional public comment, I would call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. It's got to be a record, huh?